This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Appropriations and Judication will come to order. Notice of the public hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets via electronic format on Thursday, July 19, 2018, with a second notice provided on Wednesday, July 25. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the legislature’s website. We have two bills on for hearing this morning. One is Bill 23329, introduced by myself. An Act to appropriate the sum of $5 million from the General Fund to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority for its operation in fiscal year 2018, inclusive of correcting the deficiencies as identified in the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services. The second bill is Bill 330, introduced by Senator Uggan. An Act to appropriate the sum of $1.5 million from the General Fund from the proceeds through the Tax Amnesty Program for the sole purpose of the procurement of the owner, agent, engineer, architectural and engineering services and other related services pursuant to 58D-105 of Chapter 58D, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, for the construction of the new Simon Sanchez High School. We were here at 8:00, but we were waiting to see if the CEO of the hospital would be here, and anybody from revenue taxation. But we’ll start, and hopefully they will come in as we go forward. Others have signed up, and so why don’t we take them while we’re waiting?
My name is Ken Leon Guerrero with Guam Citizens for Public Accountability. I’m testifying in favor of this bill, but I have some comments I would like to make. First of all, this bill is putting a Band-Aid on an artery wound. Back in 2016, when Bill 340 was introduced to borrow $45 million, everybody testifying on that bill agreed it was a stopgap measure, wouldn’t do anything to prevent future demands by the hospital for additional money, and we’ve seen that come to pass. So we borrowed $45 million, we’re going to pay $90 million back, and for the additional $45 million, we taxpayers get absolutely nothing. At that time, I testified a better alternative would have been to double property taxes, which at the time were $29 million, if we had doubled the property taxes, and I say that as a property owner, a rather large property owner. Doubling property taxes would not have had the impact on the community that raising the business privilege tax and raising the business privilege tax again are going to have on the community. So as we consider moving forward, I consider, you know, if you’re going to look at some type of funding to close the donut hole for Guam Memorial Hospital, consider something like that, instead of raising taxes on everybody with a portion of the taxes to be divided out to Guam Memorial and Department of Education, because there’s no guarantee that the increase in taxes that you’re proposing are going to go there. As we’ve learned over these past few months, lock boxes aren’t, special funds aren’t, so increases in tax rates with the assumption that that increase is going to go to something that’s going to benefit the community as a whole, no guarantee of that. I wouldn’t be surprised to see the mayors get another round of new pickup trucks out of any tax increase that comes up. So I’m testifying in favor of this bill purely from the sense that if this money is actually used to address the items on the CMS list to prevent the loss of CMS funding, that would be a good thing. But if this money is appropriated, transferred, and used to cover retirement, to do the preliminary A&amp;E on a $20 million parking garage, or something like that, then I would be totally not in favor of this bill. So as far as I can tell, there’s no guarantee the money will be used for what it’s proposed for, so I’m praying that it is actually used to address the CMS items, and hope that we, you as a body, consider other alternatives so that we don’t keep coming back before you, month after month, week after week, with the same old story, GMH needs money. We all know it needs money. Two years ago, we had a number of opportunities to break the paradigm, but we didn’t. I’m hoping that the crisis is real enough that we can break the paradigm this time around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon Guerrero.
Speaker Cruz, my name is Gordon Mizawa. I am the Environment of Care Chairman, which represents GMH Operations Team. I’m present this morning to support Bill 32934, which provides $5 million to the General Fund, to GMH, for curing all of the CMS deficiencies in their survey that was dated in April. My support for this bill, I have given you a status as to the current status of the action plans that were submitted on the 15th of June, and basically, out of 19 citations under operations, we have cured 13 of them up to this point, and the other six are waivers that we will get approval, or we will have a response from CMS very, very soon. In addition to that, I have attached, and I emailed it to all of the senators present, I give you a status report of each action plan, and this is solely under the Operation Life Safety deficiencies. Speaking on behalf of Guam Memorial Hospital, Operation Division will be, after myself, it’ll be Zalde Tugade, the Facilities Manager. After him, it will be Lola Pangelinan, our Material Management Administrator, followed by William Cando, our Planner. That concludes my portion of the briefing, if you have any questions.
Why don’t, I didn’t realize that there was going to be a whole set of you. So why don’t I just leave you on here, let’s hear from Mr. Burns, and then we can excuse the two of them, and then put up the rest of the people that you were thinking about having testify?
That’s fine.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Senators, my name is Edward Byrne, Director with the Department of Administration. In response to your invitation to offer testimony on these two bills, 329 and 330, I would like to comment as follows. Both bills appropriate funds from the proceeds of the tax amnesty. The balance of these funds are due by August 6. It is anticipated that the balance of remittances will total about $16 million. This is in addition to the $15.2 million already received. These balance payments have not yet been received. It should be noted that these tax amnesty payments represent funds which previous budgets had assumed would be received in prior years, and would have been the receipts of the General Fund. In fiscal 2017, tax revenues fell short of budgeted amounts by $35 million excluding Section 30 receipts. You can see this on Page 130 of the Fiscal 2017 Audited Statements. And in Fiscal 2016, the shortfall was $26 million, and this is derived from Page 123 of the Fiscal 2016 Audited Statements. To the extent that these new proceeds are used for purposes other than general fund expenditures, it must be recognized that the accumulated deficit in the General Fund will not be further reduced by this amount. In the case of these two bills, the amount appropriated is $6.5 million. An important factor of this appropriation, notwithstanding the use to which these funds are to be dedicated, is that neither provides a continuing source of funds to the benefiting In the case of GMHA, both budget bills appropriate $30.6 million for fiscal 2019, a significant advance on the $10.4 million appropriated in fiscal 2018 before the contribution afforded by Bill 329. For GDOE, Bill 330 funds a path to design and preconstruction costs for the new high school. However, funds for the construction of the school itself must come from a financing arrangement, the terms of which must be influenced, if not determined, by the opinions of the rating agencies on the financial health of the General Fund. These rating agencies have issued warnings based on the decrease in revenues caused by the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, without a clear source of local tax structures to replace this loss. Both the GovGuam agencies which receive these appropriated funds will, I am sure, put them to good use. I hope, however, that senators will consider measures to provide continuing funding to Guam Memorial Hospital Authority and Guam Department of Education, and at the same time, ensure that the improved financial condition of the General Fund, improved through an uninterrupted funding source, will be reflected in the underlying financing costs to be defined in the leaseback funding for the new high school. Tax amnesty receipts are useful, but are one-time payments. Reduction and the eventual elimination of the General Fund accumulated deficit is a goal from which we should not be diverted. Thank you for the opportunity, for allowing me to come before you, and I certainly would be happy to respond to any questions. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed any further, I want to recognize my colleagues that have joined me this morning, my Vice Chair, Senator Uggan, Senator Mary Camacho Torres, Senator Will Castro, to my Senator Tom Ada, and Senator Vice Speaker, Therese Tral. Yeah, just nobody passed here. All right, so did anybody have any questions of Mr. Burns? I know there were some issues about how much was in the amnesty. We’ve received $15 million to date, is that correct?
As of yesterday afternoon, it was $15.5 million, yes.
And we’re expecting another 17?
That, of course, must come from revenue tax, but that’s the latest figure they gave me, yes.
The report that they’ve provided to us yesterday, I think, said that there was an additional 17, that if everybody can fulfill their commitment under the amnesty, should be here by the 6th of August.
Yes.
So if anybody has any questions of Mr. Burns, otherwise, he’s testified on both, we can excuse him. Oh, Vice Speaker, and then my Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. I wanted to ask you about this. So you’re saying that this appropriation from the General Fund is coming from the already predicted revenues under 3442?
No, it’s coming from the, it’s at amnesty, doesn’t affect this year.
Right, well, that’s where the cash is coming from.
It affects the, in effect, this was revenue which budgeted was anticipated in prior years.
Correct. And what about in FY18?
No, the amnesty doesn’t affect the current tax payments.
Okay, so, all right. I guess I was just wondering whether it requires, well, this will give you an additional appropriation to use, I guess, what the cash that comes in, it doesn’t require a transfer from other, okay, all right, just wanted to make sure.
No, Senator, I don’t think it does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Burns, just, I guess, to follow on with that line of questioning, now, the $33 million, anticipated $33 million received in this fiscal year will be booked as revenues for fiscal year 18, is that correct?
Yes, Senator.
Okay, so this idea about alluding to these funds could have otherwise been collected in fiscal year 16 and fiscal year 17, that’s out the window.
No, they were budgeted, not collected, that was the point I was trying to make.
No, no, I understand, I understand, but from your perspective, it’s cash coming in in this fiscal year.
Yes, Senator.
Another question, and I thank you for clarifying that the remaining balance of the proceeds will not be received if all the agreements are honored until after August 6. So after August 6, or by the 10th of August, and it’s all about timing in this case, because we recognize that even GMHA has a time clock that they’re working with, October 3, and then obviously, they have to be able to get back to CMS and request for additional consideration based on any funds, additional funds provided by the legislature in this fiscal year. Also, with the Department of Education, with Simon Sanchez High School, albeit there’s still the pending protests with the OPA that has to be resolved, my question with regards to timing of these funds, after August 6, when would you anticipate being able to remit the proceeds to the appropriate entities, should both pieces of legislation pass?
My understanding, Senator, is, under the terms of the amnesty, these funds have to be received by August 6, in order for amnesty payments to qualify as amnesty, so they would be instantly available.
I’m sorry?
They would be available instantly, because we would have the funds.
Okay, so within a week?
Yes.
Should the additional $17.2 million or $17 million be received, the total $33 million in tax amnesty be received, that within a week, you’ll be able to remit the funds and the proceeds to the respective government agencies?
The $17 million balance would be, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Burns. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
For the information of the colleagues, the reason why these two bills were introduced and this hearing conducted as, in an expedited fashion, was because we thought that receiving the $32 million would have been into, gone into the General Fund, and could have been used for whatever the other needs were, and the fact that GMH has been shorted almost $30 million, it should have been able to get the $1 million for their A&amp;E, OAE, but it wasn’t. And the $5 million that is being proposed to be appropriated from the amnesty for the hospital, I understand that the authorization appropriation level provided to GMH to date has been completely exhausted, and so it needed additional authorization and appropriation to address it, and so that was the reason why these hearings were conducted. And to specifically state that these general fund money of 2018 would be used for these two specific purposes, the specific purpose of the OAE, A&amp;E for GDOE, and for CMS-related issues, because I know everybody kept thinking that, well, with the, with the sales tax and the 2, 1.75 of the 1% going to GMH, that they were going to use that, but that wasn’t even going to start until after August, October 1, wouldn’t probably be received throughout the fiscal year. And I know one of my colleagues didn’t like the analogy that I used the other day, but it’s like, you know, you have a kid that’s dying, and you have no money for it, and your favorite aunt says, “Well, I’ll give you my life insurance, but in order to be able to get that life insurance, Auntie Babe’s going to have to die.” And it just, you know, it just doesn’t make sense to say you’re waiting, the money that you’ve been collecting in this amnesty should have been used directly for just the hospital, because we were going to be losing the CMS, but I’m now going to be able to question them on what this $5 million is going to be used for, so, but that’s the reason why this hearing was expedited, because we didn’t realize, we didn’t, we were surprised that the administration wasn’t, as a matter of course, just providing the money to the hospital. In the past, they’ve not needed authorization, you weren’t here when they did the meritorious increases that went back 20 years. They did it anyway. So, but we want to take care of this, and this legislature wants to take care of this, and this committee is committed to taking care of this and dealing with this, and the fact that they need to have a funding, a $30 million a year, both budgets that we proposed have a $30 million provision in it, in case some people didn’t realize that it was in both of the budgets and not just in one. And so I just wanted to assure the community that this legislature is trying to address the problem at the hospital, it’s just trying to figure out where the cash and what direction you’re getting on how to use that cash.
Yes, Senator, I think I personally appreciate the appropriation approach to this issue, because that, I think I was asked the other day, can I pay for items that are not appropriated? And my answer was no. So this, to me, is an appropriate way to deal with the issue.
Okay, and I appreciate that, because that’s the reason why we’re moving forward with it. And you have any further questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Burns, if we need this bill then to give $5 million of the tax amnesty to GMH, would we need another bill to appropriate the $15 million that you’ve already received to GMH? That, you couldn’t have sent that over to GMH without a bill?
No, Senator, because it wasn’t appropriated.
But we’ve already appropriated to GMH.
Yes, that appropriation, or the pro rata part of that appropriation, is paid out of General Fund.
Right, so where did the $15 million go that you’ve already received?
I think I answered that question the other day.
It went to other appropriations?
It effectively reduced the liabilities of the prior years, and that was what I was trying to demonstrate by bringing up the issue of the tax receipts that fell short of budget.
So if you’re saying that you can’t give any more money to GMH right now, I guess I’m not really understanding that, because, so do we need to make an appropriation for the rest of the $16 million that we’re expecting on August 6 to go to GMH? That’s the only way you’re going to get it to GMH if they need it, is by an additional appropriation? You can’t transfer it there based on existing appropriations?
No, the existing appropriations are being paid out of the General Fund, and by the end of the year, we will have exhausted those appropriations.
Right, but apparently, no transfer authorities being used to prioritize GMH over any of those others, right? And so that’s why I’m asking, so the rest of the $16 million, why are we not appropriating that, then, if GMH is in an urgent situation? Where do we come up with 5 versus 16? Why are we not using the rest of it?
Well, so the 5 was, I believe, this body’s number, not mine. There certainly would be an argument for appropriating more.
Because it’s your testimony that we can, you cannot give GMH any more cash, money, unless there is an additional appropriation?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Burns. It’s just a follow-up to the Vice Speaker’s, her questions. So the $16 million that you anticipate to receive on August 6, you’ve already, or minus the $5 million now, you’ve already determined where that, where those funds will be, will be used, is that correct?
No, not specifically.
Okay, so if we then amend this bill to authorize and appropriate the entire $16 million to GMH, because it is a priority, it’s our priority, and I believe the executive branch would share that priority, then that’s how we would address the entire $16 million to go towards the hospital?
Yes, so long as the body understands the consequence, which is a reduction in the ability of the funds to reduce the accumulated deficit.
Okay, so yeah, I believe you made that, you made that very clear. So, Mr. Chairman, you know, I don’t know if in committee, or perhaps on the session floor, I’d like to make that proposal, that the entire amount, minus the 1.5, I believe, that’s for Simon Sanchez, be appropriated to GMH.
As long as we’re discussing it here, and it’s now the, being mentioned, we can amend the bill. It was my understanding when we had the hearing last week, that the administration had some other things that they were going to be paying, that this, though we keep saying it’s the amnesty, it’s going into the General Fund, in the same way that you’ve been rating all the special funds, it goes into this General Fund, and it’s paid out from the General Fund to make the tax payments, I mean, the tax refund payments, and other vendor payments, and other needs of the government of Guam. But if you’re testifying today that that’s available, that may be what is passed next week.
Mr. Speaker, I don’t think I testified that it was available. I said, in response to the Vice Speaker’s question, that it hadn’t yet been identified which specific payments are going to be made, but I think it’s clear for anybody looking at the numbers, that there are plenty of payments which do need to be made, including tax refunds and other liabilities.
And I think the thing that you’re going to have to be more forthright about is, under what authority did you spend the first $15 million?
It went into the General Fund, there’s liabilities of the General Fund, those, all the items that the General Fund pays have been appropriated at some time, the difficulty was that the revenues fell short of the appropriations, so we were forced to pay later rather than sooner, as soon as those funds turned into cash.
And I was tossing you a softball, to hit, hit the bottle out of the park by talking about the fact that it is going into the General Fund, and you’ve had the authority to do this, to make all these payments, to make the tax refund payments, because revenue has been short, the 67 hasn’t come in.
Yeah.
But you’re saying, you told them, and I’m not going to argue with them, that it’s there, and you need the authority to spend it, and so I imagine it’s going to be forthcoming, that this is going to be amended up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to make a general statement. You know, with all due respect, we all recognize that GMH needs an efficient of funds externally, and here is $5 million, which was never requested from the Tax Amnesty Program by representatives of GMH, never once, since June, and that’s based on testimony provided before this legislative body. Now, this legislature, through the speakers, is taking the initiative to say, “We’re going to identify $5 million so that we can try to offset and ensure that CMS doesn’t rescind the certification, and we, and our people continue, can continue to avail themselves of Medicare and Medicaid and receive medical treatment at GMH.” And I take exception, Mr. Speaker, and it’s up to the body, because all And I take exception, Mr. Speaker, and it's up to the body, because all it needs is eight votes. But giving the same team, management team, additional resources without enumerating specifics, specifics as to how those proceeds are gonna be expended, I have some serious reservations. Because we are giving it to the same individuals that brought us to this situation today. We need greater accountability in terms of how public funds are expended. And that's why I'm, I'm amenable to the $5 million that enumerates exactly how the $5 million is gonna be expended, and then any additional resources, unless stipulated in the provision, and it should be specific. Because, Mr. Speaker, unless you or the healthcare chair had received a similar document highlighting the so-called activities that have been completed in reference to the CMS and some of the requirements, this is the first time that I'm exposed to a document that says a certain percentage of the requirements by CMS has been addressed. This is the first piece of document that I have received, unless you, Mr. Speaker, or the Chair of the Committee on Health has received documents that reflect any activity with regards to CMS or the joint commission previous accreditation. I do have some serious concerns about throwing money into a system and not ensuring specific accountability of how the people's money is gonna be spent. And I, I wanna close again by saying we need to be accountable to how, as to how these proceeds are gonna be expended, how they're gonna address CMS requirements, so that we can avert any rescinding of the CMS certification for Medicare and Medicaid. And we certainly, Mr. Speaker, need to ensure that that's incorporated into the legislation, because otherwise, we're just throwing money into a system with the same management team without assuring the people of Guam that there's gonna be accountability of how those proceeds are gonna be expended. And of course, increasing this from five to three, plus three, because of the retirement situation, is understandable, because we have employees at GMA that want to retire, and they're not able to retire because of, of the lack of remittance of appropriate payments to the retirement fund. So, there are some, some real issues that need to be addressed, but unless it's enumerated in the overall appropriation, I would like to insist, Mr. Speaker, that that is, that be highlighted as part of the legislation. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any other senators? No? Okay, well, go ahead.
Mr. Byrne, then, what about the $14.7 million lien on MITPAK? Do we need to give you appropriation language in order to specify where that will go to when that is collected? Or could we? Because it seems the same. This is all revenue that's supposed to have come in, it's been appropriated already where it's supposed to go, but you're saying you can't give it to the hospital unless we give you an additional appropriation. So, would that be the same for the $14.7 million that you're expecting to receive? If that, is that, you're, you're expecting that, right? $14.7 because of the lien?
It's a lien, and I can't, you'd have to ask Rev and Tax. I don't know what, when the funds for that lien are going to be received, and they may not be received before the end of the fiscal year. So, I, I, I think it might be premature to try and appropriate a lien. I think we have to know when the funds are, are actually arrived.
Well, the way I see it, appropriating the $16 million right now to GMH alleviates some of that $30 million that they're hoping for next year. And next year, we have no concrete guarantee of where we're gonna get that money at this point. And this looks much more concrete to me, and if we have a lien, that looks pretty concrete to me also, because we've got the courts involved now.
Well, Senator, a lien is a lien. It's not, it's not funds.
Well, no, but it's, expected funds. And like the speaker said, when you receive the $15 million, you spent it, and, with, without the need for an appropriation. So, it's just another avenue, that if we're really trying to get money to GMH, and we, you know, they have urgent, urgent needs, then getting them real, concrete money as soon as possible would alleviate the need for us to, you know, increase the tax for FY19, if, if that's what we're looking at, to get them their, their money.
Senator, may I please remind you that the, at least at the end of fiscal 18, we are not absolutely certain what the general fund deficit is, but at the end of 17, it was 73 million. Those are liabilities which the general fund still has to pay. And, and if funds aren't available to pay those liabilities, those liabilities will, will just begin to stack up again. So, I mean, that's certainly a choice that the legislature can make, but there are consequences to it.
Correct. And, and same as what you're doing right now, right? With the current appropriations, you're prioritizing where the cash will be spent, which, and where we will be incurring liability instead. Is that right? I mean, that's kinda what we're, well, well, thank you, I guess, that's, you've answered my questions. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. I have, oh, you do? No? Okay. The two of you are excused. Mr. Gordon, just stay, and the rest of your people that you said you were gonna be speaking after you? I, I, who, who are they? Call them up.
We've got Zaldi Tugadeh, our facilities chief. We have Lola Pangalinen, our material management administrator. We have William Cando, our planner. So, if he can come up, please.
Why don't, why don't we have you speak on behalf of the hospital, and then all these rest of them would augment your testimony, whatever it's going to be that they're going to say, and then we'll deal with the, the question?
My name is Peter John Comacho, and I'm the administrator for the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. I'm here today with members of my team to speak about, or on the, on bill 329-34, an act to appropriate $5 million from the general fund to the GMHA for its operations in fiscal year 2018, as well as to correcting deficiencies identified in the centers for Medicare and Medicaid services. Mr. Speaker, we are most appreciative of the effort that you've put forth to introduce this bill. As you have heard many, many times, the hospital is in need of, of cash infusions. It's actually functioning on an average of $30 million operational shortfall for different reasons that you've heard before, specifically the patient payer mix at the hospital and our ability to collect from those patient groups. The $5 million that you are offering for the hospital to see us through the end of our fiscal year operations is very welcome, as I said, and it is also timely, and unfortunately though, not enough. But again, the $5 million will go a long way to helping us with the things that we need to do at the hospital, and we are most encouraged by the, this effort to be able to provide assistance to us.
I want it very clear, this $5 million is specific for addressing the CMS needs.
Yes, sir.
And so, I was hoping, and I'm hoping that the rest of these people that you brought up, will provide this committee details on how the $5 million is going to be spent between now and the next six weeks, to make sure that if another survey team comes from CMS, that they will see that there are plant and facility correction actions that have taken place. This is not, not, I'll say it three times, four times, not for operations. This is specific for CMS deficiencies. And I want to know what CMS facility deficiencies are going to be addressed by this. Okay? All right? That's, that's what I want to know.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, there obviously, well, we had provided you a listing previously totaling $28 million, 374, and 220.
The purchase, the purchase of a computer system is not gonna be completed within the next 60 days. Okay? I know it's gonna make life easier for your doctors and your nurses and everybody else to be able to make their input, so that the CMS deficiency criticism about them not doing certain things and not having it in the records, that's gonna be great. But the thing is, is you already have a computer system for right now. What I want to know is what can we do between now and the next six weeks, so that when somebody comes the last week in September, all the railings are fixed, the, whatever is, needs to be fixed? And don't start me down the panel, because they, they didn't go into there. There was nothing in the CMS criticism that talked about the panel.
Unfortunately, Senator, Mr. Speaker, they will, they are aware of the panel, they are aware of the roof, and when they come back out, they will be looking at that, looking for that.
Okay, that's great, but I'm just saying, on the list, I need to know what was on that 80-some pages that I went through? What facility things need to be addressed? Are we replacing the, the dishwasher and the things in the, in the cafeteria? How much is that gonna cost? I, that's what I wanna know. What's, what can be done in the next couple of weeks to address those issues that are up front? The fact that they're not having the Thursday meetings isn't going to be what we're going to be paying for here. Okay?
There are many things, but first of all, sir, yesterday, the GIDEA had a press conference that identified that they were going to be paying for different things that were CMS requirements, to the tune of about $600,000. In some of those would be things that have been identified in the, in the survey. For example, the freezer doors that were identified. Dishwasher, that's also a need that we need to have taken care of. There are some other things, the walkways east and west. These are the immediate jeopardy's that they had identified, and we were fortunate enough to have abated.
And how, the abatement that you implemented, is it sufficient to be able to address their, their criticism?
No.
That's what I want to know. How much is needed to make sure that those abatements will not be criticized again when they get here the last week in September? That's all I want to know. I'm, I have tried to help you. This appropriation in both budgets, including a $30 million appropriation, shows the commitment that I'm trying to help.
Yes, sir.
But that's for next year. I'm only asking for the next six weeks, what do we need to do to make sure that the, that we don't get, lose the certification after that, that meeting? What things need to be replaced? How much are those things going to be? And...
If we're looking at that listing that had been provided to you, Mr. Speaker, the $28 million, we are looking at, if we forego the $20 million that you've said to exclude, we have a fire pump assembly, we have the test and drain valves, the walkways east and west, Egress doors.
And how much are those? I think some of my colleagues are wondering, maybe if we allow the rest of them to talk, we'll be able to find out what it is?
That would help. We can do it.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and testify, and then we'll ask the questions? But please, this is not for operations, Peter John, this is $5 million to address CMS. And stop dreaming that it's operations. Go ahead, Gordon.
Mr. Speaker, coming up now is gonna be Zaldi Tugadeh, our facilities chief, who would, who would explain the specific items with CMS. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the panel. I'm Zaldi Tugadeh. I'm the facilities maintenance department manager in acting capacity. It's since, I think about five years now, going on five years. In reference to the CMMS findings, which we have 19 total, we already addressed 13 of those, which rounds about to 68%. And the remaining, as I previously mentioned, I think the estimate of that is around 300 to 500 alone.
Mr. Speaker, if I may. Zaldi, thank you very much. Peter John, I'm making a general statement, because it's not about criticizing and questioning and critiquing only, but based on what Zaldi just shared with us, out of the CMS requirements, the action plan submitted on June 15, 2018, identified 19 discrepancies that had to be addressed. Based on what Zaldi just highlighted, it says less completed deficiencies as of 7/2018, 13, 68%.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to highlight that, without any external infusion of funds, you were able to address 68% of the CMS discrepancies that were identified. And I just want to say thank you for doing that internally, and I recognize that, and I see the effort, but keep in mind, please, that when additional funding is provided, we need these things sustained. Because you're sharing, Mr. Comacho, you're sharing with us that you were able to do this internally in the last few weeks and address it. So, rather than these discrepancies coming up in the future, as either safety or health concerns, please take care of it without having to come to this body and say, "It's all financing, it's all financing," when in actuality, you were able to internally address 68% of these discrepancies, and that's commendable. To me, that's commendable, but it did not take, need to take a third-party individual to come in here and tell us, "By the way, you have 19 discrepancies, of which 13 you can address immediately." So, I'm just saying that, and I recognize the efforts so far that has been applied towards addressing the discrepancies that were identified by CMS. I just wanted to, to, to make that statement, because it speaks volumes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I think we need to make here open and clear that we are addressing what the findings were at the time. But internally, with due diligence, we're working on doing our own internal audit to further our findings. So, this is just part and parcel to what our audit is going to be. This one of our CMS findings here regarding the Egress doors... This one of our CMS findings here regarding the Egress doors, they found twenty-one and we're about 75% done addressing it. But overall, in our audit, that is triple the number of their findings. So we need to address first what their findings are, and then we'll address next what our internal findings are. That way, we're sure that when they come around, they would not find the same findings, again, hopefully.
If, if I might, Senator Uggan, you're right, we were able to identify the funds to be able to take care of some of these things, but at what cost? We had to reprogram monies from within our current budget to be able to address these things because they were immediate and we needed to take care of it. But did we give up maybe purchasing medications? We're on credit hold with quite a few pharmacies or pharmaceutical providers right now. What about medical supplies?
Mr. Camacho, I don't need to go into specifics because procurement of medication is one of your foremost responsibility in terms of medical treatment and care. So I don't know why you would have to forego procurement of medication when it deals directly with patient care. So please, don't share that, don't share that information with me here and let me know that in fact, you're advocating, providing good, safe medical treatment to our patients up there because you have to address CMS issues that could have otherwise been addressed over the course, or sustained over the course of the last year and not need a third party to come in and say, by the way, you have to address this. Because the way I read it, and I was complimenting GMH, but now that you brought it up, but I was, the way I was looking at it is, you were able to address this, you needed a third-party representative to come in and identify these discrepancies, and you, you took care of it internally. That was commendable. But to say that you had to forego procurement, possibly procuring medical supplies, equipment, and medicine, that's a different story now. You're telling me that your, your responsibility of providing medical care to our people is taking a backseat to addressing some of these CMS issues when these CMS issues never should have occurred? That's what I'm saying. I tried to throw a compliment in your direction, Mr. Camacho, to you and your team, but if you want to start talking about medical, actual medical treatment to our people out there, be cautious.
Senator Uggan, William Cando, Hospital Chief Planner, just, just in support of what Peter John is trying to say, is, yeah, we would have to forego treatment to the patients. Those are operational expenses. Where's the money going to come from?
You know, I'm not here to debate anyone. And, Mr. Cando, I appreciate you trying to inject yourself into the conversation, but the reality is, what did I say a little earlier? Since the tax amnesty already projected a, to generate cash collections, cash collections, not appropriations, by August 6th of about $25 million, which was the first figure that was thrown in our direction, between 20 and 25 million dollars, not once, based on testimony provided here, so don't change your statements now, based on testimony provided here on two separate occasions to members of this body, that not once did the administration request any of those additional tax amnesty collections. So don't talk to me about financing and don't talk to me about appropriations. What, what I'm here to do is support an additional infusion of cash, making sure that we are accountable in terms of how those funds are expended. Now, if, if it's going to have to forego, then guess what? There are certain areas that we need to take a look at, and what is the fundamental purpose of GMH? Is good, safe medical care for our people.
So we just want to know?
No, 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 I'm not here to debate you.
We're not debating, Mr. Cando, all right?
We just want to know why, how can we use the five million if you're telling us we can only use it for CMS? There's other issues that will come up by CMS if we can't have flexibility with that five billion dollars.
All right, fine, then testify. Go ahead. Finish.
Is Zaldi finished?
Just to continue on with the CMMs. Like we said, the fire pump assembly, test drain valves, those who are already PO'd and in the process of being awarded. The Egress doors, as we say, were continued, hopefully by next month will be completed. The cafeteria doors, they're also in progress. The walkways, by next week, we should have a PO to immediately address the demolition of those east and west walkways as a first and parcel to the phasing and replacement of this east and west walkways. So in total, we're, we're doing our due diligence to expedite things, however, again, there's procurement processes that we have to go through. And I believe my colleague here can say more on the procurement process that we do have some problems with, based on what regulations we need to abide.
And can you provide the committee with that, that listing that you have and the amounts? Because this doesn't have any amounts on it of how much you?
It doesn't have this because this is just the findings in verbal form. And what we did is we have it in here, that what we submitted, the estimated cost that we're looking at here is pretty much reflective of what we got estimated before.
Yes, can you provide the committee with that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Can somebody copy that for everybody up here? Mr. Cando?
I wanted to say one, I want to say one thing. I want to say one thing in regards to the three, the three October certification requirement with CMS. Not only do they require you to mitigate all the items that was, that was found on the survey, but any other known deficiencies, right, that we are aware of. And this is why Mr. Tugadeh states that we, we have the partial list, which probably at this point comes up to approximately $340,000 to finish the six items that we, we requested for waivers, okay?
Limit your testimony to just what we were doing with facilities, all right? The operations, I will have your, your administrator to talk about. Just tell me what it is that you're doing to meet this need and how much it costs you.
If you look under physical environment?
Correct.
The first, the first six items are directed to all life safety items found in the April survey by CMS. The other items that we also know at this current time that needs repair are the additional three items that you see there, roof repair, maintenance program software, and the CCTV system.
And is, has there been an RFP out on the roof?
Not at this time because one hundred requirement, we can't, we can't, until we get certification of funds, we, we can't issue anything, right?
And so, how are we going to be able to address this when they?
Senator, Speaker Cruz, we are develop, we are in the process of developing the, the scope of the RFP for that, we're getting that ready. It's a, it's a pretty comprehensive system that we need to replace. So we need to make sure that we get it right before we put it out.
And what would?
That's a part of the same system, sure, it's a surveillance and access control system.
It's listed separately as two million need.
Yes, sir.
Has that RFP gone out?
No, sir, it's in the development phase.
It would never be done by October the first, third, would it?
No, no, sir.
So we'd be in noncompliance on that one regardless of whether or not we provided you with any additional money today?
Well, sir, the, the things that CMS are identifying as, as little problems with the existing system, we're, that's how we're, we're putting Band-Aid fix, we're putting Band-Aid fixes on an old system. In the meantime, we're getting ready to do a full replacement of an obsolete system. We don't want to keep on throwing bad money, good money after bad. But to address the CMS issues with the surveillance and access control, we're fixing little pieces of the existing system.
So how much was spent on, on correcting the 68%? How much was spent to correct the 68%, the 13 items that you've already done?
Well, so far, what we incurred on the 68% is the cost for the Egress doors. We, we haven't received anything or used up anything for the fire pump, nothing for the test drain, nothing from the walkway, nothing for the hazardous areas, and nothing else for the cafeteria doors. So again, the Egress door is in progress, so we're 75% on that particular item.
And that, that takes care of 68%?
That should take care of the 68%, sir, yes. So the remainder is the bulk of it, which is right here, sir. That's the bulk of the remaining after the 68%.
Do you want to do your testimony, Mr. Cando, and then?
Yes, sir.
Please.
I think, I think Lola, Lola's our procurement administrator, I think she just deferred her time to me because I have the longer presentation, but we're, so we're going to get into a PowerPoint presentation. Speaker Cruz, thank you for the opportunity, and Vice Speaker Tullai.
This, this PowerPoint presentation that you're going to be doing, is it addressing the five million dollars?
Is it, is it less than five million dollars?
You're, you're, I want, I'm trying to figure out how we can help you with the five million dollars. I don't need to know what needs to be done 20 years from now or down the line. I need to know immediately, how can five million dollars help you in addressing the CMS concerns?
The presentation, the presentation covers some of those issues, which can be done in the shorter, shorter and intermediate term, and some of the presentation covers a longer-term CIPs.
Well, right now, all I'm concerned about is trying to figure out how we can help you.
Yes, sir.
Because as Senator Uggan put it, while all of this amnesty money was being collected, we've had two previous hearings with your administrator here, and both times we asked, has there been any requests from, from GMH administration to the fiscal team at Adalou, when one of them, your CFO is a member of the fiscal team, has a request been made to devote some of that 32 million that's coming in to the hospital because we're being told that the CMS certification is going to, is going to be terminated on, on the 3rd of October?
Yes, sir.
And so, that's all we want to know, is what, what are the immediate needs? And you made this presentation before, I was there for all the presentations that you've made in the past, and so all I'm trying to do is, what can we do to assist immediately? And what would the five million dollars be able to do to address CMS needs?
Yes, sir.
And that's?
And we're, and we're, and we're covering a lot of those. We're working very closely with CMS. We couldn't, we could not, I will say, we could not wait for this money to come to us to pursue, that's why, that's why Zaldi presented, you know, the percentage of things that had, we had to, we cannot wait, we had to pursue the money, you know, wherever we could get it, we had to stop pursuing and certifying various projects. So we are not going to be losing CMS, I can guarantee you that. And I don't, and I don't make many often guarantees.
Okay. All right, fine.
But I would, I would like to get into this presentation.
We will, we will take your presentation as, as having been read into the record.
The, one of the things that I, I really feel we needed to present in this presentation is the, is the erroneous information that's being put out regarding the electrical distribution panel to the media. The media is saying that we don't need to replace our panel, and I, and I, for the record, I need, I'm trying to share why that is completely false. As a matter of fact, there's quite a bit, quite a few lies that are being put out in the media.
And that's, that's not in this list of your 28, all right?
No, but it, it is a CMS concern. And I'm, and we, we-
But it's not in the list.
No, but we had a, we had in a conference call with CMS, we discussed it with them at length last Friday, and they want to know what are we, what are we about to do with our, with our electrical distribution panel? And so?
All right.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to correct that for the record. We do need to replace our panel.
You can, you can submit testimony to the committee in writing on that. Did you have anything else? Anybody have any questions of them? Gordon, they'll ask the questions. No, there'll be questions, there'll be questions that'll be asked. Otherwise, there's no answers that I need.
Mr. and Mrs. Zawa, can you confirm then, on your, on your testimony, you've told us that nineteen items, thirteen are completed, that's 68.4%, and Mr. Tugadeh went through the list of what was done. And now the six items that remain, did I understand you correctly, Mr. Tugadeh, that that will total 340,000?
Right about there, yeah.
All right. So the five million would definitely cover this if you have no other source to cover the 340. And I understand there are other concerns now that CMS has brought up, and, but are those not on this list, like the speaker said? Well, obviously, the electrical panel's not on here. What, what other needs? Are we going to get a written report regarding the phone call with CMS as to what their additional concerns are?
You got the roof repair and the closed-circuit TV.
So those were not originally cited?
No.
Okay, so, so those two, all right.
The, the roof, the roof repair was cited by Joint Commission.
Right. So those two, all right. So, but, so you added this in, this is a list of, what would you describe this list as then if it's not CMS concerns? Or are they CMS concerns now per your phone call? So they weren't put in writing, but now pursuant to the phone call, these are additional concerns?
They are aware of these deficiencies, right.
Okay. And in addition to this now, Mr. Cando is saying also the electrical panel? We were told that's about five million before?
It's a six million dollars. As a matter of fact, we, we are in the process of working with EMCE, our, our A&E designer of record for that project. The designs are going back to the table for a review and recertification to make sure that we get, we get it right, exactly what we need to do.
All right. And I understand that in addition to these immediate CMS concerns, that CMS has put the potential to find additional concerns on an ongoing basis, and that that's your presentation of all the other things that GMH needs, right? And I just want to assure you that we are aware that GMH is in great need of many things. We are aware of that. We are perplexed by, like some of my colleagues have said, the, the lack of response by the administration as to prioritizing money to get to GMH. But we're doing whatever we can, there's, so I just want you to know that, that, and so we are going to continue to do this. If you have a written report regarding, that would tell us that in addition to, because you also gave us a spreadsheet that shows the CMS citations in detail, what you've done to, or what your response was to them, and, but if you've got some kind of, we, we haven't seen the ones that CPS has rejected, I mean, sorry, CMS has rejected or, or any updates since that. And if you have that, or the ones that they've added on now verbally, if, if you would send that to us with, like, your response to them? So I'm assuming that if they brought something up in the phone call, then that you've responded as to how you were going to fix, or you're going to send a response, is that correct, Peter John? You're going to send a response to them?
Yes.
After the phone call?
Yes.
And that's still pending?
It's due today.
Due today, okay. Do you have a draft of that, that?
No, we don't.
All right. Okay, well-
If I may, Mr. Speaker, you were asking about what is, what we, you were going to use, what we were going to use- If I may, Mr. Speaker, you were asking about what you were going to use the $5 million for, based on the paper that was provided to you folks. Fire pump assembly, test and drain valves, the walkway east and west, egress doors, hazardous area enclosure, the cafeteria doors. We stopped at the roof repair because you were saying that that's not to be included. The other thing, though, is the closed-circuit TV and access control. That is for safety and security. We do need that. We need that for maternal childhood areas, and we need that also for the security and surveillance of the building of our campus. And the last part there would be positions needed. You noted there that it says a case manager position needed for. This is referencing the discharge planning citation that was identified by CMS as a serious concern for them. And part of that corrective action would require the hiring of those positions. So if my math is correct, that would bring us up to about $3,800,000.
Could I just ask, Mr. Tagori, didn't you just tell us that some of the walkway you have taken care of, or you're taking care of as part of already, that that's included in the 13 items?
No.
No?
It's not, we had to proceed with the procurement process, but no, we never had the funding for that. We're hoping for these funds to help support...
Mr. Tagori, didn't you just tell us you took care of the egress doors, the walkway?
No.
We did take care of addressing the immediate jeopardy that is imminent at the time. We haven't addressed it fully to make sure that it is addressed adequately as per CMS.
The walkways are still there. We're going to be splitting up the construction services into two phases. One is to do a demolition to immediately remove the hazard, followed by a second phase to replace it with construction services.
The egress doors that Mr. Tagori was referencing, ma'am, is that they've actually sealed off those doors so that nobody can actually go through now. Because that would have been a concern if somebody was able to jimmy the door open and fall, you know, to their harm. So we did that.
Let me, if you look at the status report, which is this form, it shows you specifically the 13 items that's been completed. Okay? Approximate cost for that was approximately $150,000. The remaining six items, and that's also on that status report, indicates the items that required waivers. Okay? CMS is looking at that right now and will send us a response. We don't foresee any problems in that being accepted. The cost of that is approximately $375,000. Okay? That's from the survey of April 2018. Okay? I get back to the certification requirements of CMS. Not only are you required to maintain any deficiencies noted in every survey, but any other known items. And they are aware of those, mainly the roof and the CCTV. Okay? The electrical panel is another issue, so I'm not going there. Thank you.
Explain the waiver.
If I may, Mr. Gordon, Mrs. Zawa, explain about the waiver. It is more on a submission to CMS for us to be considered to give us more time to address these six items. Because at the time, we cannot really fulfill and address this right away, similar to the 13 items that we already completed. So the waiver is what we have submitted to CMS to allow us and give us time to complete it. So that time is ticking right now. So if we don't get the funding for this, and we won't be able to complete it, then I'm not sure if another waiver would allow us to continue on.
Thank you, Zaldi. Mr. Speaker, just looking at the information that was provided, I think you're absolutely right. Just for the information of the public, excuse me. Based on the title of the document and the information provided, it says CMS and Joint Commission citations with direct funding requirements. And a big component of this, the total required is $28,374,227, of which $20 million will be required to upgrade the IT system. And we know that within the next 60 days, the IT system will not be addressed. And neither would the roof repair. But, Mr. Speaker, based on some of the information provided, what I'm seeing before us is a minimum requirement of $8,374,227 that is needed to begin the process of not only recruiting critical personnel with regards to patient safety officer, a hospital nurse risk management officer, infection control preventionist, and some of the other positions, but also to address the items that were provided by CMS and Joint Commission citations. So to me, I'm looking at $8.374 million, and then I brought up the additional requirement for addressing or allowing some of the employees at GMH to be able to retire through the retirement fund. So in terms of the funding needs, that's what I'm looking at. Now, my question, I know, Zaldi, you mentioned that you're requesting waivers because you're not, GMH may not be able to complete some of these projects before the designated deadline?
Yes.
Has there been a request from the governor's office to assist with the use of the emergency procurement process?
Let me talk at this point. Sorry, very, Mr. Speaker, but since the governor's designated me, I feel I'm, you know, compelled to respond. There's no doubt we're going to make every step to go through each of these items, and I certainly think that the GMH staff should be commended for the effort that they've made to respond as quickly as they can to address the most immediate issues on this list. And as they've relayed, 13 of those items have been relayed. But I think at the end of the day, you know, we can go back and back and forth on this and badger each other on it. At the end of the day, I think we recognize that just getting by at this point is not good enough. In my dealings with a number of our federal partners, they're going to want to know not only what corrective actions have been made, but we understand some of these things are not going to be addressed and procured between now and October 3rd. You know, getting the amount you need, $5 million to repair a roof, or the $20 million that's needed to update their IT system so that they can maintain the most current ability of healthcare records and ensure that as services provided to patients, they can simply sit there and plug that information in so that it's recorded, and the cash registers at the GMH are going to register the needed revenue and payment that's required for that. I don't doubt that that issue is there. I wish you'd given the panel here the opportunity to do their presentation, because certainly looking at this list, and will be more than happy to share this with the public as well. I think we recognize the critically dire situation that GMH is in right now. I think it's reprehensible, Mr. Speaker. I think we all should feel that way, that most of the people here to my right have not had their retirement contributions paid for some time. I'm sure you had your retirement contribution contributed today, probably, I assume today's payday. Mine has, I think just about the rest of government of Guam has had their contributions paid. The fact that they're behind and the retirement fund is looking at suing them is showing how critical this is. I don't think these are things that people that provide this professional care that we need in our community should have to contend with. We are in a crisis situation, and while you can badger them on the list, trust me, I'm going to be there walking and holding their hand every step of the way as needed to ensure that we can demonstrate we've made every effort to comply with these issues leading up to October 3rd. However, what needs to be put in place is a funding source that's going to show good faith effort, that the government of Guam is going to be able, with the hospital, to address the other critical deficiencies. If you look at the list in this presentation, and you look at the age of some of this critical equipment, I'm sure the public will probably be very surprised and disappointed to see the age of some of this equipment that we're using to provide direct patient care up at GMH. Some of it's over 20 years in terms of useful life that's still being used up there. So at the end of the day, please, I understand, you can beat up GMH all you want to at the end of the day. We can beat you guys back up in return. I don't know what that's going to gain. But I think we recognize that if GMH loses their Medicare reimbursement after October 3rd, you are not going to be in a position to immediately address the cash needs of GMH that exist on a daily basis. Financially, you don't have much ability right now to do an awful lot of borrowing on the bond market to make up the difference in the near term. So while we recognize, certainly, I think you, and I appreciate your efforts of advocating this issue, Mr. Speaker, I think you've been at this a long time. You know that if this issue isn't addressed today, it's going to come to roost tomorrow. I hope you do look at the upcoming budget to address how these significant deficiencies outside just of the scope of what's being brought up here can be funded, or address a get well plan to how it's going to be funded. Because I don't think, in all honesty, GMH, and I think you know that, can continue to operate as they are. So yes, to be commended for the 13, it's not enough. But I think you're also going to need to have to demonstrate where the funding is to address the remaining things on this list, and is the money going to be there? Because you're putting them in a very tight situation. They cannot, they cannot make commitments to ensure that the funding's going to be there. Because at the end of the day, that is not their authority. That authority to appropriate is your authority. And while you can debate with the administration what the priorities are and what's important, what's not important, you get to make that decision when you do the budget, what those priorities are. And right now, I just want to add, for GMH, it's not demonstrating that GMH is the priority because of these deficiencies. The fact that these things have been able to go on this long, to deteriorate to this level, that we have to have a federal partner come in and tell us what our deficiencies are, and then we're worrying about their list, rather than making a more comprehensive move to ensure that we can fund what is a numerous list of deficiencies way beyond this, to ensure that we have quality patient care at GMH.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker, I did pose a question, and there was a particular purpose behind that question, and I don't need the previous speaker to be able to respond to this. Because this is in light of a request for a waiver to address six items that will cost GMH or the people of Guam $375,000. So my request, my inquiry was, has there been any request or consideration on the part to move to the governor's office and ask the governor for emergency procurement authorization so that you can proceed with this and get back to CMS and say, rather than requesting a waiver, we've been able to expedite this, we have the complete support of the governor's office with the emergency procurement, we should get this done by a certain timeline? That was the question.
The purpose in requesting the waiver for CMS is because projects like the...
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Kamacho. The inquiry was, has there been a request for the governor to extend his emergency procurement authorization to address some of these discrepancies?
Senator, the whole point is that the project won't be completed by one October, even by 30, 60 days.
No, no, I understand.
So that's the waiver.
But at least with the use of the emergency procurement authority by the governor, you can begin the process, like, within the next week. And get your solicitations, expedite that timeline so that you can report back to CMS and say, realistically, this is the timeline, by October 15th, or by whatever date, that these items will be completed. It's the use of the emergency procurement process, and it's extending yourself, maybe this is asking too much, extending yourself to the governor's office and asking him to please assist with his emergency procurement authority. That was the question.
If I can give an example, Senator, for example, the egress, those two things were immediate jeopardy's. Based on the professionals at the hospital and other information, it's going to take, it's not going to be completed till January 2019?
That's the projected date that we submitted, provided that the process would go through smoothly.
But see, you're using, because you're using the regular procurement process. The governor's emergency procurement authorization shortens that timeline addressing an emergency situation.
Not unless the delivery can be made within that 30 days. I got a little more familiarity with procurement on emergency procurement. I had to deal with that with generators.
I was bringing it up as a, like the speaker said...
I understand, I understand.
He's throwing a softball.
I have to say, Mr. Speaker, I understand.
Can I request...
I understand, but you're putting them in a situation of having to go pedal for funding.
No, Senator Brown, you are not following my train of thought. Because if I can ask you to suspend your statements, please.
Mr. Speaker, if you pass your bill and your appropriation today with your $5 million, that would be tremendously helpful. We can nitpick these issues. I think we're past nitpicking every little piece of issue and every little penny at this point.
Thank you very much.
Senator Brown, and just the reason why I was throwing this off, Mr. Speaker, is because if you need procurement, emergency procurement authorization, legislate it. This is an opportunity for you to be able to ask this legislature, can we please get emergency procurement authorization so that, in fact, you can proceed with the roof? If the funding is provided, you can immediately proceed with the repair of the roof. I was throwing you, like the speaker said, a little earlier, a softball.
There's time restrictions, Mr. Speaker, on the delivery under emergency procurement.
But if you don't want to recognize that as an opportunity to be able to work together and address these emergency situations, then I don't know what else, other than providing you funding, is necessary for this part.
We'll accept the funding. We'd love the funding.
Thank you very much. Then that testimony. We'll call the next panel. On Bill 230, I mean, 330. Mr. Attila, Ms. Seguenza. Mr. Burns already testified.
32077.
Monica Phyllis. Who is going to provide oral testimony on 330? Sandra?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me to speak up. I'll be very brief. It's just oral testimony. First off, I want to thank all of you for trying to rebuild the school named after my grandfather. I've remained silent on this issue because the original procurement that was being handled through the Department of Public Works was bid upon by a business colleague of mine, and I didn't feel it was appropriate, though I'm not directly involved. You all know I have a longtime relationship with Philip Flores, and he was bidding on the DPW procurement, and I didn't think it was appropriate for me to discuss it. But now that we have law that moves the responsibility for building Simon Sanchez to the Department of Education, and we have proposed legislation to help the Department of Education fund the design, and I assume fund the resulting procurement document that would come out for them to handle that procurement, and no bid is, there is no bid at play, then I feel that I'm free to speak, more freely to speak, and I thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to endorse any effort that would assist the reconstruction of the school named after my grandfather. And I just have a couple of questions that I will just share with the committee. Perhaps you already know the answers. These are questions that might speed up the procurement process, unless there's other information that you may be aware of, or you can subsequently determine. It's my understanding that you cannot issue a procurement without a funding source. So the Department of Public Works had a funding source originally for the original procurement that is now under protest. I'm assuming in the law that was created to move it to the Department of Education, the funding source for the big school is still available to be used once you have a successful procurement. a successful procurement. So my understanding of the law would be that bucket of money D P W was using for the procurement would now flow to D O E. And if I'm incorrect, then I'll stand corrected. But if that is true, then the other thing that I, I've always wondered about is the, an agency can cancel a procurement for the good of the agency, I believe it, at any time. And I understand from the media reports that there's some concern that the protest is still with the public auditor, and we, we now have a retired public auditor, and we now must replace the, the public auditor at the next primary election. If, and so my question to the committee that you can then research is, if D P W cancels the procurement now, would that just eliminate the protest at the public auditor's office? They'll cancel it for the good of the community. They also will cancel it because they're no longer in charge of actually building the school. And by canceling the procurement, then that, then you would end the protest, and you could more easily move to having D O E begin the procurement process. So that's really just my questions to you is to, if you haven't already, I'm, I'm curious, I want to presume that the funding source that D P W was going to use to pay for the school is the same funding source that D O E will use, even though they may need some money now that you're additionally trying to provide for engineering and design. There's no way D O E can issue an R F P unless they have this design. And I'm hopeful that in, it's not just the design, that the consultant they would hire, as we often do at, at the utilities and other government agencies, also helps them write the R F P that they would issue so that you can then solicit public-private partnership bids. So if that bucket of money moves over, that, that's great. I'm, I'm sure you may know the answer that, better than I do. And then the other, the second piece is simply whether, could D P W be encouraged or could, could they consider canceling the protests, I mean, canceling their bid if it eliminates the protest, which would again allow us to move more, more quickly. I, I want to also just take this moment to thank Mr. Bynum and the students and the staff, and all of you. You've been trying to do this in good faith. It's, it's unfortunate, it's reached where it's reached, and perhaps some of the thinking I'm offering to you today and your own thinking will help us move it faster. But, so, good luck to you, and I, and I hope you're able to rebuild the school named after my grandfather. The, the community needs it and deserves it, and I know you're trying, trying to do it, and perhaps my suggestions might, might be helpful. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Ms. Phyllis?
My name is Monica Phyllis. I am a teacher at Simon Sanchez High School, and I will be brief. I am support, I'm in support of Bill three thirty dash thirty-four. The legislature has given G D O E the power of procurement, and I think now we need to take another step to make sure we can exercise that power, that there is funding to exercise that power. So I am in favor of Bill, this bill.
Mr. Babauta? Were you going to provide testimony? I'm just going down the list as, but I recognize Senator Sanchez first.
Buenos dias, Mr. Speaker, and members of the thirty-fifth Guam Legislature, thirty-fourth Guam Legislature. Thank you for the, thank you very much for the opportunity to testify on Bill three I am here to testify in favor of Bill three thirty. I believe that it is crucial to get this bill moving so that the architectural and engineering design of the new Simon Sanchez High School can be accomplished sooner rather than later. I was at Simon Sanchez High School a couple of months ago, and was rather perturbed that the school was allowed to deteriorate throughout the years. The learning environment, including the facilities, is crucial in the teaching and learning process. Therefore, the, the bill needs to be acted upon expeditiously. Mr. Chairman, while I was active duty in the Air Force, I spent some time as a mechanical manager at Ramstein Air Base in Germany. I had many opportunities in helping with the design of new facilities, and in the process, it was conveyed to us by our leadership that we need to address at least four factors during the A and E process. The factors are as follows: safety, aesthetics, engineer, and energy efficient and maintainability. And the facility must be compatible with, with its intended purpose. With respect to safety, it is imperative that the state-of-the-art safety systems be included in the design process in view of the school's safety issues that have occurred in the states, auto-lockdown in the school relative to gate security, unlocking of doors, shatterproof glass windows, and much more. With respect to, with respect to energy efficient and maintainability, it is crucial that energy efficient and maintainability be included in the A and E design process. In addition, the facility must be compatible with its intended purpose. G D O E is currently embarking in a career academy concept, and I believe that it's very important that the A and E design include perhaps a wing to address as school, the programs that are being planned to be included in the school. Therefore, Mr. Speaker and Senators, I, again, in favor of Bill three thirty, and I respectfully request that the process be expedited expeditiously. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Babauta, for your testimony this morning. The speaker just stepped away for a moment. The next individual on the list is Walter Salas. Is Mr. Salas in the room? If not, Ronaldo Villaflore. Janine, Janelle Santos. Janae Uggan? I'm sorry, did we get you to sign in? You did? Okay, we'll get to that list shortly.
Good morning. My name is Janae Adami Uggan. I'm a proud graduate of Simon Sanchez High School, class of nineteen ninety-eight. I, I honestly just came here today just to show moral support, and then sitting down here and looking at the support that our team has, I feel like I need the moral support. So I decided to say something really quick. My aunt graduated from Simon Sanchez in nineteen eighty-seven, and I can tell you from nineteen eighty-seven until now, because I've been on the campus recently, I'm currently a junior achievement mentor for the Simon Sanchez Fulfill Junior Achievement Team, and nothing has changed. Nothing has changed since I was a student as well. And it's kind of sad. In two, in twenty fourteen, I've been following along, along with the rest of my classmates, and we've seen that, two, twenty fourteen, I believe it was Senator Juan Pad who introduced the bill, and nothing came of it. And then in twenty sixteen, there was even a press conference in the cafeteria, and nothing has come of it. And I think it's safe to say that we're kind of, we're kind of disappointed. You know, Simon Sanchez is a great institution. A lot of great students have graduated from the school and have gone on to do great things, Senator Talina Nelson being one of them. And I think we just want, we, I just came here today to kind of voice our concern and that there is support out there, and we really, we're really looking for you guys to please rebuild our school. I'm sorry, I wasn't as prepared. I really was just here to show support. But with all my classmates off-island, listening and watching on Facebook Live, they encouraged me, can you please say something on our behalf? So I'm just speaking on behalf of my classmates, a class of nineteen ninety-eight. Please rebuild our school. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Ms. Uggan.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing the public to speak on the bills being proposed. My testimony will be short, as you are all aware of the situation at Simon Sanchez High School, and I will spare this body the history lesson. I am in support of both bills, three twenty-nine and Bill three thirty, the bill for Simon Sanchez. Both bills address the priorities that this government is mandated to provide to this community. That's healthcare, of course, and education. I would just like to remind this body of the commitment it made to the students and teachers of Simon Sanchez earlier this year when you passed a bill authored by Senator Uggan that transferred the authority to the D O E superintendent. That was a good start because this government was not able to get the job done, and we believe that the superintendent can. So this commitment to the Shark family must continue and includes funding, and although it may not be much, after eight long years of no progress, at least it's, it's a start, and at this point, we'll take anything. So I encourage all of you to honor your commitment and not stab the students in the back and the teachers in the back. Support Bill three thirty, and let's get, and let's get Simon Sanchez started so it can be as beautiful as this legislative hall. I just wanted to add one more thing. After hearing the earlier testimony and the speed at which money disappears on this island, I would like to request that if this body can add an additional one million to the proposal being authored in Bill two thirty. It is estimated that it's going to cost about five million just to get the A and E process started, and getting us to that halfway point, just in this first phase, will do, will do a lot for morale, do a lot for the progress, and, and, and it'll, you know, it'll hopefully get this school off the ground and, and maybe get it off your radar for a while. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bynum. Have you spoken?
Good morning. Excuse me. Good morning. My name is Shannon Seguenza, and I have been a rugby coach for Simon Sanchez since two thousand nine, and in two thousand fifteen, I made the decision to continue my teaching career there as well. Before I address the bill specifically, I want to give you just a snapshot of this community that makes up Simon Sanchez High School. Our Shark family is a painfully underserved community. The most tragic, heartbreaking stories, crime, poverty, drugs, violence, and the trauma that is produced from these unfortunate realities has touched too much of the student population in this part of our island home. One may expect broken, blank, empty, and hopeless when they think of these life circumstances. I can't help but wonder if the blatant negligence of our governing bodies stems from the fact that maybe our demographic wasn't connected enough to tap into the wealth that only seems to touch the wealthy on this island. Despite the broken homes, tragic stories, and the constant fight for new facilities, I have encouraged, I have encountered the most resilient, brilliant, brave, and loving community of young people at Simon Sanchez High School. As an educator, the courage and spirit that spills from our kids is beyond amazing to me. Our kids excel in academics, civic engagement. We win competitions across the ocean with junior achievement. Our kids excel in music, various trades, and services to our community. They thrive in supporting and uplifting each other, and they even bring happiness and light to myself and my colleagues. Each day, my colleagues and I weave through overcrowded hallways, carts full of classroom equipment, because we have no places in our school to call our own. Could you imagine not having your own office, having to pack up all your stuff, move across the building, unpack it again, and then do it again in the next ninety minutes? That's the life that we live. There's ninety teachers to sixty working classrooms, and that's a logistical nightmare. It's stressful on us, our administration, and our kids. And we make up for it, the cracked sidewalks, the, you guys have walked through the school, you know what it looks like. And we do what we can as teachers, but it's really not enough for us, and it's not enough for our students, and we deserve more than this. Despite the terrible conditions, kids leave Sanchez ready for the workforce, ready for trades training. They create, build, and breathe life back into our community. Our kids come from a school, come to a school from worlds that don't always serve them the best, with teachers working against the odds, and somehow, through the fight and spirit, we create the very best we can. And it is insulting that this, this struggling community has to fight and has been fighting for the basic need of functioning school and education for so long. The Gigo community contributes so much positivity to this island. We have rallied, given, taught, shared, grown, and created so much. We deserve more than this. Please stop pointing fingers and take responsibility, or hold those responsible responsible for misuse of funds. We deserve your dedication, your time, your innovation, your creativity, and real solutions to our issues, whether they be financial or otherwise. Not just for the school community of, in Gigo, but for the island as a whole. The Sharks give everything we have, always. It isn't too much that we ask the same from you. I strongly support Bill three, three, zero, dash thirty-four, and urge that the body do what it takes, use your powers, your time, and your efforts to move this process along swiftly, to fulfill promises made to this school community for years, and to rebuild Simon Sanchez High School. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Speaker, B J Cruz, and the other senators who are present today, and of course, the other education stakeholders who are present this morning. My name is Maria Lourdes Tenorio Milligan. It's quite long, but community calls me Meilu, and my students call me Doc M. My training, it's important that I share this with you. I have a biological sciences major in my undergrad, master's and doctoral degrees. This training helped my career, working with multicultural students for twenty years, serving a science educator with the Department of Education. I also serve as Chair of the Science Department at John F. Kennedy High School, Assistant Professor at G C C, and Adjunct Professor at U O G. I'm also active in civic engagements, currently President of the Guamérica Alliance Club, and seated, sitting as Board Member of the Salvation Army. What I'm trying to accomplish here today, I'm here to testify to support the approval of Bill number three, three, zero, dash thirty-four, an act to appropriate the sum of one point five million from the general fund for the sole purpose of the procurement of O A, owners' agents, or O A E, or architectural and energy services, for the construction of a new Simon Sanchez High School. As a lifelong educator, my energy is focused on how to improve the learning environment. I join the ranks of educators in advocating for an equitable education system that serves students based on their needs and assets and provides resources for their success. On Guam, we are very fortunate to have dedicated teachers, administrators, staff, and school board, school board members who work to deliver in spite of perennial challenges that stem from insufficient funding, financial mismanagement, political biases, and federal bureaucracy. I'm equally proud of our vigilant citizens, some of them are here, who always remind us that it is our constitutional duty to fully fund our island schools. It was revealed in recent budget hearing for the Department of Education that D O E was not given the resources to start the process of rebuilding Simon Sanchez High School. The students, teachers, and staff of Simon Sanchez High School will continue to have to deal with facility conditions that have been deemed a health hazard. I taught at Simon Sanchez High School for eight years. One... One of my proud moments was coaching an amazingly brilliant team in a marine biology island-wide competition. They were champions. These inspiring students were the first Guam representatives in the regional Hawaii Bowl. I remember the outpouring of generosity from the community as we solicited support for the students' travel expenses. My late husband, then a senior English teacher and a fearless GFT union steward, was fighting for an environmentally safe workplace before he transferred to another learning institution. He rallied the teachers to get the attention of the Occupational Health and Safety Administration, or OSHA, as there was an alarming rise in cases of respiratory ailments among teachers and students that time, and that was 1998 to 2000. OSHA investigated and found molds in the classroom. Molds are fungi, or fungi. They are non-photosynthetic organisms, meaning they don't require light, they only need moisture, organic substrate, and the right temperature to reproduce and thrive. They can only cause health problems if they produce allergens. The old massive school building that's sitting in Gigo has no windows, so it's a windowless structure, and is dependent on efficient air conditioning for good air circulation. The system requires regular inspection to make sure that there are no leaks where moisture can induce mold production. Lack of funds means poor maintenance. The condition has been an issue since 1998, and it's now 2018. OSHA has acknowledged the health hazard from molds, but they have no mold standards, and not easy to find violators for neglect. They did come up with mold remediation to give tips to people on how to deal with mold infestation. Mold illness is real. That's why I'm here, I want to explain it. It is a subcategory of biotoxin illness known as Chronic Inflammatory Response Syndrome, or CIRS. The clinical condition is an acute and chronic systemic inflammatory response syndrome acquired following exposure to the interior environment of a water-damaged building with resident toxic genetic organisms, including but not limited to fungi, also bacteria, actinomicides, and mycobacteria, as well as inflammogens, and this includes volatile organic compounds. My own children are Shark graduates, and they would know the challenges as they spent four years in that school. It's amazing, really, how the school manages to survive the sad long years of deterioration and unsafe condition of classrooms, bathrooms, hallways, and other facilities. Despite all these obstacles and inadequate resources, the Shark spirit shines. The school produced outstanding citizens in the local and global levels, and we are very proud of it. Jeff K. High School went through the same journey while I was teaching there, but vigilance and determination of teachers and students pushed the rebuilding of the New Islander campus on that same location. The time is now to rebuild Simon Sanchez High School. An investment in education is an investment in our children and our island's future. The leadership of our island must once and for all prioritize education and well-being of our children. In the near future, I am optimistic. I am running for public office, and I want to see a newly rebuilt Simon Sanchez High School, a well-maintained public school facilities, adequate oversight for charter schools, locally customized curricula designed to prepare our students for employment in the region, adoption of tech courses like financial literacy and coding in secondary schools, improvements to the quality of education via enhanced infrastructure and access to information and community technology in our classrooms, community recognition of outstanding education workers, and targeted legislation that provide dedicated funding of education programs aimed to help our children. Going back to the OSHA findings, that mold infestation is real. It's been more than two decades when I left that Simon Sanchez High School, and it's now 2018, and we're still talking about the same building, the windowless building. Now, our classes will open soon, and how many students will be flocking to the same More than 2,000 students? And we are responsible if these students go to that same building and get sick. We are a very loving and protective community. We want protection for our students, for our children. We even have a bill where you cannot smoke anywhere, or just so everywhere, because you don't want secondhand smoke to affect non-smokers. Now, this one is identified already. The building is mold-infested, and we are going to get sick, not just the students, but also the teachers, the workers, the whole school community. What are we doing? Are we going to send our people there? Are we going to send our children to the same poor health condition of the school? What can we do? This is our responsibility. Now, students will stay in that building for eight hours a day, and how many school days? 180 school days in one school year. Can you just imagine the exposure of these students to this hazard? Please, make sure, it is really urgent, it is immediate, that we build a new school for Sanchez, for our Sanchez High School students, for the whole school community. Thank you. It is urgent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Mr. Leon Guerrero?
My name is Ken Leon Guerrero with Guam Citizens for Public Accountability, and a few of you know, I have not been a big fan of the legislation that was first introduced to renovate Simon Sanchez High School. I've been much happier with subsequent pieces of legislation, and I think this piece of legislation really is a very critically important piece of legislation, because this legislation sets Simon Sanchez on the path of doing things right. When I was a consultant, I used to tell my clients all the time, why is there never enough money or time to do things right, but always enough to do them over? We have been dancing around Simon Sanchez for four years since I got involved with Simon Sanchez. I think this bill is the perfect first step, because one of the big problems we've had in the protest is how do you compare apples to pineapples to alligators? And that's what the previous legislation did. It created an environment where you couldn't, and so it basically came to whoever gave the best presentation. But by designing the building first, and presenting all bidders with a set of plans to build on, then it will be more effective to determine which contractor is providing the best value for the students of Guam. And bear in mind, we're dealing about the future leaders of Guam. And so, a little personal story, I came here from Dodea. When I was a military dependent and I was a student, I was in the Dodea system, and on Guam right now, that's considered the gold standard. When I came here to Guam from Okinawa, I had to stay back a year, because Department of Education Guam was so much farther ahead than Dodea was, and the Dodea program, that I had to do seventh grade over again. And I would like to see Department of Education here on Guam get back to that point where the Department of Education is the gold standard and the preferred school system for our families. And the only way we're going to be able to do that is to provide adequate facilities in which the future leaders of Guam will be educated and trained to take care of the next generation of leaders. And the way we do that is follow the wise advice from Ben Franklin, who said, "A stitch in time saves nine." Now, a lot of people just rush through that. Stitch in time saves nine. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But you have to say it slowly. A stitch in time saves nine. Doing the A and E first is the stitch. Getting it done first so that we know what we want will make it easier for you as senators to fund the final project, rather than buying a pipe dream. And so that's why I'm very supportive of this bill. I think that it gets the Simon Sanchez process back on track and provides a way to clear up the log jam currently caused by the current procurement system where we're trying to compare apples, oranges, and alligators. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Villaflor?
Good morning. My name is Ray Villaflor. I'm a teacher of Simon Sanchez for about 16, 17 years. I have no speech or no testimony, but I'm here for experience, as these guys were talking about it. And, you know, we have about 20 people in here, very comfortable, nice building, and again, congratulations to your nice building here, but imagine there's no aircon in here, all the windows are locked or closed, no sunlight, 2:00 in the morning, you're trying to teach about 20 kids after lunch, afternoon, yes, and it's tough. We actually make do for that, and again, I'm not trying to blame anybody, and I know you're doing all you can to actually do your best to actually build a school. And that's the first thing. And I have leaks in my classrooms, I have buckets on the right side and the left side because there are leaks in there. And again, a short story, when I was doing my quiz, one of the tiles I actually fell almost hit a student right in the head, and I was praying that, please, you know, not think that that happened again, all right? And that's the first thing. And I also coached tennis at the school for about 10 years now, and the first thing that I always grab right before I coach is a vice grip and a hammer. Why is that? Because the net, all right, I don't have a full set of net at the school because there's holes. I mean, you know, the net has holes, but I mean, this is the big ones, where the ball goes through it, and, you know, I fix it myself. I actually take out all that, the net, I use a vice grip to hold the net up for the actual net to stand in the court, all right? That's just pretty much my experience with school. My son, I live in Santa Rita, and I teach at Sanchez. He doesn't want to go to San Sanchez because he's been there before, and he said, Daddy, your school is very dirty. He wants to go down to a different school because of that reason, all right? And I said, Son, we have good teachers, we have Mr. Bynum, Ms. Seguenza, Ms. Fliss, and all the teachers that are good at Sanchez, but he doesn't want to go to school there because of the facility, right? And yeah, and that's it. I mean, I wasn't really prepared to, I don't have any testimony, I just felt like from my heart, I wanted to let you guys know how teachers make do on what's going on in our school, and all of us actually, and Shannon, Mr. Bynum, we make do in what we have at the school. Again, thank you for making me speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Villaflor. Anybody have any questions? If not, you do.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I just want to thank everyone for your testimony this morning, and I also appreciate the suggestion that the amount be considered to be moved upwards by an additional million dollars, because if, based on the testimony by the superintendent, based on prior hearing discussions in terms of general estimate, I think that the 2.5 million dollars should be sufficient to be able to get the process moving quickly. I also appreciate the question that was presented by Senator Simon Sanchez, whether in fact DPW can inject itself in the process and address the protests, but because we are having, we may have, or we will have, the people of Guam will have a new OPA by the conclusion of August 25th, then hopefully that would be one of the first actions taken by that particular individual in terms of resolving the existing protests. But thank you very much for presenting your testimony, and also especially thank you for sharing the situation at Simon Sanchez, because whether it's eight years, it's just go to see the facility, just walk through the facility, even on the first day, which is you anticipate that all the effort is going to be incorporated into preparing the school to receive the students on the first day, but just walking through that facility in the first day, I can already anticipate that there will be similar situations that you've experienced every single day during the school year. So I appreciate the testimony this morning. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I also want to thank you all for taking the time to give us your input on this bill, maybe ways that we can make it even better, and I'm really glad to hear from the stakeholders that they have the support behind this bill. I also would like to mention that there are other folks, other community stakeholders that are also in support of this bill, but were unable to attend because it conflicted with the rainbow graduation that's going on right now at Ukuru. So it's my understanding, and I received messages from other members of the community that they're also in support of this bill. I did want to ask a question, but Senator Uggan beat me to it. So, yeah, Mr. Bynum, I just wanted to clarify that you were requesting the additional 1 million dollars, and if you could just repeat for the listening audience what that would be used for, or what you suggest that could be used for.
Sure. I think in the last budget hearing for DOE, the superintendent had mentioned that just to get this off the ground and get the A and E and the other, is it the OA? I don't know the acronym for that, the OA or whatever.
Owners Agent Engineer.
Yeah, that stuff. Off the ground, it's going to cost about 5 million. Now, I really appreciate the senator's, you know, continued commitment to Simon Sanchez. When I heard the testimony that the superintendent gave, that the money that was previously in this, what do you call this account, for the rebuilding, that was in there last year, around May, when the proposal was given out, all of a sudden, it's just gone. So, you know, the superintendent was on the record saying that he would like to at least get a process started before the school year began, but that's going to cost about 5 million. I know that the government is tight for money, I know that this body continues to deal with the hospital and just many other issues, but if you cannot forget Simon Sanchez, and you know, the 1.5 is a start, if we could get another million on top of that, based upon the, based upon the report from the Department of Administration this morning, that there's going to be some money, if you can give us just a little bit more, that'll get us to the halfway point of the start, and, you know, that can kind of get the ball rolling and maybe, you know, give some morale and give us some hope up at Simon Sanchez, because as Mr. Villaflor said, these are the daily things that we have to deal with. Senator, you all, I think, have been up at Simon Sanchez before, we've had public hearings up at Simon Sanchez, the good Senator Tom Ada has proposed legislation to try and address this situation, and so on and so forth. So if we could get just that much, just a little bit more, I think it'll go a long way to getting this project off the ground and maybe off your radars for at least a little bit.
I don't think the goal is to get it off our radar, we want to keep it on our radar. Even if the project is completed, we'll have maintenance issues and many other things that hopefully this body and future legislatures will, that should be their priority.
I think, yeah, I think, you know, the reason why I said that is because there are a lot of things, a lot of struggles, and issues, and situations that the government is dealing with today, and Simon Sanchez is just one. So yes, it's important, we've been fighting for a long time, but we're also, you know, we're cognizant. we're cognizant of the fact that we are not the only ones on this island that is up at Simon Sanchez, asking for money and trying to get something done. So, we'll take, like I said in my testimony, whatever little bit you can give us. The first step was the, all of you unanimously passed Senator Ogun's bill, that's now public law, that gives it to the superintendent, that's the first step. The second step now is trying to fund this bill, and I would encourage all of you to please support this bill. Like Ken said, it's a really good start, and we have someone here from a class of 1989 that, 98, I'm sorry, 98, that, you know, I'm so happy, she came out as well to testify, and, you know, so whatever you can give, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bynum. I also just wanted to mention that we did receive testimony from the superintendent that's, you know, just shows that he's very supportive, and he agrees that while they believe that a total of 5 million will ultimately be needed, this 1.5, and then what you're proposing, the 2.5, will definitely give them a jumpstart in this project. So, again, I just want to thank you all for your testimony today. You know, Doc M. had mentioned that this is not just for the students and for their families, but also the teachers that are there day in and day out, and thank you so much for sharing so much of the, many of the things and the challenges that you have to face every single day, from tiles falling to mold and cracked walkways, and all of those things that our students are contending with, but you also have to deal with day in and day out. So, to just mase, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just wanted to point out that I appreciate the testimony by the superintendent in writing, saying, "While we believe a total of 5 million may ultimately be needed, the 1.5 will certainly help jumpstart the project." Yet, the bill is written, I want to thank, the bill is, to me, not very clear, and I want to thank those who testified, reminding us the need. Of course, I think, I hope you all know, we are very aware, and I think it's, every legislature has been aware of the need and has been acting on it. We're also aware of the need for the architectural and engineering, that's why the bill was passed to require architectural and engineering first, because that was the problem, was that in the prior procurements, it was not ever clear what DOE wanted in this new school, what the capacity was going to be, and things like that. But my concern is that the 1.5 is now coming out of a separate source of revenue, not the original one. It was supposed to come out of the same source of revenue as the construction of the school, so that, you know, it's kind of an incentive. You save money on whatever parts, so you can use it on whatever parts you find to be the priority, for example, construction, or whatever you're going to put in there. And as you know, that bill pretty much took the money that was going to be allocated between Simon Sanchez and the repair of other schools, and has now authorized it all to be spent on Simon Sanchez, if the DOE superintendent sees fit. So, my concern is that we're now giving this amnesty money, which is a totally different source of funds, but I, it's, I don't have any objection to that, because of the finding that there was no cash in the other fund at this point, and if it was going to get this project really to proceed. But I'm concerned with this description, that it's just going to jumpstart, or halfway start, or just give some motivation, as opposed to what will actually this 1.5 accomplish? Because the list of things that it's going, it's authorized to be used for according to this bill are the Owners, Agent, Engineer, and Architectural and Engineering Services, and other related services. And so, I would think that, I would like to see, I wish there was someone here who could testify as to the estimates of 5 million versus 2.5 million, that I've also heard this morning, versus this 1.5, and what we're actually going to get from the 1.5, so that we can be more specific as to what this 1.5 is going to go towards, and that that is something very concrete, that the people of Simon Sanchez and all of us can feel much more motivated about and comfortable with using 1.5. For example, I'm not comfortable with sending it to any other related services, no. I want it to go to something very specific, that really shows that this is, that it really does move the project forward. So, I would just ask that the committee consider that, Mr. Speaker, and if we could get concrete estimates from the superintendent, where he comes up with the 5 million figure, where the 2.5 million figure comes from, and if there could be any savings in those, because I really feel like the less we spend on that, the more we can spend on the actual construction, and that's what I'm hoping for. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Could I address her point very quickly?
Let's get this one testimony in first.
I apologize. Like I said, I'm the youth mentor for a lot of the students, and they're actually watching right now, so they would like to be here, but today they're doing a school cleanup. So, they would like to extend their thanks for, they would like to thank you guys in advance for hopefully passing the bill, as per their words, and yes, they would like to also just share the gravity of the school right now. So, right now, they've asked me for donations, because they're doing a school cleanup, like I said, because when it rains, it gets flooded, and they just wanted me to address that, that when it rains, it gets flooded, and that they would have to put plastic bags on their shoes so that they wouldn't be soaked. And I know the teachers can attest to this, and I can too, because when I was there in 19, from 1998 to when I was a freshman, it would flood, and I would have ruined shoes all the time. So, I just wanted to add that on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
May I ask a question?
No, we don't usually have questions asked.
Oh, okay.
But thank you very much for your testimony. At that, we will have Bill 229 and 330 have been heard. We stand adjourned.